Okay.
There we go.
Here we go. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Could I remind you to mute and switch off the, whatever it is, the picture icon? Because we did have some problems yesterday with the streaming and for the children's ONS. And I have a sneaking suspicion when I was watching that a lot of people were not muting and actually switching off the camera bit at the time. So if you could just remember to mute in particular, and I will call you forward if you shove your hand up as and when you want to speak. Apologies. Well, we've had an apology from Kate Rolfe, and she's replaced by Clive Rickards. Welcome, Clive. councillor Shepherd has given an apology, and we've been replaced by councillor June Tandy. So welcome to you, June. Also apologies from Shade Agabola and Vicky Castrey at Coventry. Chair's announcements.
Sorry, Chair. Sorry to cut across you. Just as we were starting the meeting, I've received a further apology from councillor Chris Kettle at Stratford. Sorry, Chair. Thank you.
Fine, Paul. Would you record that? Obviously. Thank you. Any disclosures of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest? Gerry?
Yeah, on agenda item number two as a director of Healthwatch, which I'll be referring to Healthwatch in that item.
Okay, Gerry. Thank you very much for that. Keith?
Just the same as last time, that we're trying to get a GP surgery built in Weddington. So there's ongoing talks with the CCG.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay. Then on to Chair's announcements. Helen, are you with us?
Yes. Yep, I am here.
Thank you. One of the things I want to mention that at the last spokesperson's meeting, we did agree to a task and finish group meeting. And Helen, perhaps you would like to just give a quick rundown on the purpose of the task and finish group?
Yeah, so it's really to look at social and health, well, health inequalities across Warwickshire, specifically in the north, and how these have been impacted by COVID or how they've been highlighted by COVID. So a real drill down on those two things coming together, really. And it was going to be something that we were going to bring to full council, but gratefully, we discussed it at spokes and we were able to agree, which was fantastic.
Okay, fine. Just to say that the initial membership of the group will be Helen, Keith, Gerry and Margaret Bell. And I've asked them to report back initially for our January 21 meeting. I've also, I don't know whether you all received that email that was sent around regarding the 111 first programme. My intention is to discuss it with the spokespersons and look perhaps to bringing that forward in November. That meeting we are focusing on, in particular on mental health. I've seen a hand up. Jo?
Right, I've pressed my buttons. Whilst I'm very, very happy that some work can be done on health inequalities, essentially in the north and the result of COVID, do we not think that it is something that either we should be doing across the county? Because I think it's exacerbated things across the county. Or we rely on the Health and Wellbeing Board where pretty much that and the Place Forum, that's where we do look at these things. I don't want us to be duplicating too much effort on top of anything else. Okay? Thanks.
When you say exacerbated things across the county, Jo, what do you mean by that?
Well, the health inequalities are measured as measured, not against where they've gone locally, but against national measures.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, I'm not going to rehearse them here, but I'm sure you've seen in various patches in the north, the same as I've seen in various patches in the southern part of the county, different things worsening massively. So I'll give one example of the mental health problems and increasing levels of domestic abuse, which, all the things that run from that. So I just wonder whether it's already been done through the Health and Wellbeing Board, that's all.
Gerry, you wanted to come in?
Some, Chair, I think if I remember rightly, at the spokes meeting, we talked about looking at the Warwickshire picture. And from that, there would be some drilling down, looking at the north on the advice of the Public Health Director. And that was the angle. So we would look at the overall evidence that's going to be presented. And that'll throw up things differently, in the south, the east, the west and the north. And then from that, there'd then be a further drill probably into the north to look at those particular issues. And that would take account, as you quite rightly said, about the Health and Wellbeing Board and some of the work that's doing. That's hence, I think, a presentation or whatever was going to happen initially from the Director of Public Health, because I'd be able to give that rounded view and highlight the particular issues. And then from that, there would be some lines of inquiry that we could go down following. I think that's what we were looking at. And I think I did send an email to Helen and yourself saying, could we actually be very precise about what the health inequalities question was? Because that can be as broad as you want it to be, or it can be as narrow. And I think that the first meeting with some experts there, like Sade and the rest of it, will actually help us refine our thinking on what the actual question is that should be looked at. That's what I think we discussed at the spokesperson's meeting. But it would pick up on the north as well.
Can I just throw in? Is there anybody in that little number who's on the Health and Wellbeing Board? Again, so that we're not duplicating effort. It just makes it helpful. We all know what this is like. More of us that can actually talk to each other, the better. You know, with many fingers and many pies.
Nigel, you wanted to come in?
Yeah, if I could, please, Chair. I suppose really in response to councillor Barker's point, and I have been thinking about exactly the same thing over the last few days. I wasn't at the chair and spokes meeting, unfortunately. I think there is an opportunity now. So the Health and Wellbeing Strategy is out for consultation. We are in that process over the next few months of developing the detailed action plan that will sit underneath that. And I think there is an opportunity to make sure that as long as we join things up properly, that actually the task and finish group can inform what needs to be in the action plan that the council will then approve through the Health and Wellbeing Strategy at the end of the, I think in March, probably. So I think there is a really good way that we can link together and kind of save on duplication as long as we manage that carefully.
As long as we are not, forgive me, but as long as we're not preempting the health inequalities with this is what we already think, that we do go into this with an open mind.
Les?
Yes, Chair. I mean, we will all remember that at full council, we agreed to set up a county-wide group. Its first meeting is already called for a joint, scrutiny, a joint meeting with communities, because it's not just a health issue for the 25th of November. So how many groups are we running and does the council have the capacity? And as Nigel says, the Health and Wellbeing Board, Swift is working on it. There's a lot of work going on. What I want to avoid is duplication. And we actually are productive.
Margaret?
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, I put my hand down because most of it had been covered. But my understanding was that COVID had highlighted a few other issues, or at least exaggerated some of them. So I thought this group was looking at the COVID impact across the county and seeing where there were inequalities there. Obviously, that's a subset of what's going on in other groups. And I agree with Nigel that it could feed in, it must not can, it must feed in to the overall picture. So as long as this group is focused on what's COVID done about as far as health inequality is concerned and feed it in, then I think it's a worthwhile exercise.
Thank you very much for that. Helen, yes, Helen?
Yeah, I agree with Margaret that that's what the group is for. And it's also about moving forward, isn't it? I mean, we're still in COVID, so we still need to think about how we can avoid certain, you know, some people being more vulnerable if we can move things quickly. But whether we can or not, we're going to be seeing. But yeah, that's what the group was for.
Okay. Thank you very much for your contributions. I'm sure the members of the task and finish group will bear those comments in mind when they get together. I have nothing else on the Chair's announcements. We now have minutes of the previous meetings. We've got 24th of June, 23rd of July, special meetings, 30th July, 19th of August. Going to the first one, 24th of June. Is it your wish to accept them as a true record?
Yes, move those, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Could we have a proposal and seconded to accept them, please?
I'll propose it, Wally.
I'll be the second.
Thank you very much. Going on to the 23rd of July, same again, is are there any issues? Can we accept them as a true record?
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you. Coming on to the 30th of July. Again, can we accept their true record and pass them as approved?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. And the final one on the 19th of August, our latest one. Do we, are there any issues? Can we accept them as a true and true record of the meeting?
Agreed.
Agreed. I see a couple of hands up for proposing and seconded. Thank you very much indeed. Just get my paper. Right. Thank you very much. Going on to item two, public speaking. We have none. I believe that's right, Paul?
That's correct, Chair.
Thank you very much. Then going on to item three, the questions to portfolio holders. We do have a question from Margaret Bell. Margaret?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody's seen it. So if not, I'll just quickly go through. There's just been a few things that's happened recently, which has made me very concerned about how quickly we're being able to stand up the more routine health interventions across the piece. And most importantly, there seems to be discrepancy between what the NHS is doing and what the private sector's doing. I've got three very quick anecdotal examples. So blood tests in North Warwickshire, and I know the CCG are aware of this. I usually go to Atherton. It used to be at the leisure centre. It's been moved. But anyway, it's a community-based phlebotomy service. And at the moment, the wait time is horrendous. So I checked on Sunday this week, which was the 27th of September, and the first available test is at 14:25 on the 21st of October. And there was one slightly earlier at Polesworth. I did notice actually that Coles Hill has suddenly sprung up as a centre, but I'm not sure anyone knows about it. It's not too accessible. But the point being, twice, because I have to have regular blood tests, twice I've paid for a private phlebotinist to come to my home, £10 a time, because I just couldn't get a blood test at the right time. And so they're obviously working, the phlebotinists in the community centres are working. George Elliott is offering no services at all at the moment to the public, and neither are any of the GP services. And I just don't understand why some can and some can't. So question on that. I also this week went for a regular check-up at my dentist, to which I happened to be a private patient. And there was nothing wrong with my teeth, but I went as a normal check-up. And I asked if they were seeing NHS patients, and the answer was no. If an NHS patient has got issues, they'll try and deal with it on the phone. They will prescribe antibiotics and painkillers. They will only see an NHS patient if it's an absolute emergency. And I just don't understand that either. And then an acquaintance of mine was concerned and phoned the GP surgery because he couldn't hear in one of his ears, and he had got pains in his head. So the GP was concerned enough to see him face to face and said he had a huge amount of wax in his ear and needed to get it sorted. Gave the usual advice on how to soften it. Please book to get it syringed. The nurse said, no, we cannot do any ear syringing at all. You must go to Specsavers. He phoned Specsavers, £35 a time at Specsavers and an eight-week wait. So apparently, these people are all acting according to advice and instructions indeed that they're being given. So my question really is, who do we go to with these concerns? Because there's a real issue about a divide opening up between those who can pay and go privately and those who rely on NHS services. So I know that these aren't emergency services, but they're important, important routine check-ups that people need. So who do we go to? How do we make our feelings known? And how do we get some assurance on this? Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, it's a little long.
No, no. Les, do you want to go?
Chairman, I will respond, but this really needs to go to the North CCG. Because they are in charge of all these issues. Certainly, blood tests are only be done at Swift, and you make an appointment and you certainly get one in 24 hours or less. So certainly that is happening in the south, because I've had to use it. What is happening in the north, but I can, we also would have thought George Elliott would be doing a similar system, but we will need to ask. NHS dentists, the one I use is certainly taking standard inspections. But they are, and they are triaging if you need a filling or anything like that. Because after a filling, the whole surgery has to be fumigated, cleaned and everything else. So there's a limit. But certainly, I have heard that there are possibly private dentists that are just expanding their work. But there still is the question of cleansing and everything else. And certainly in the south, they haven't been syringing ears for two years. You're expected to do it yourself. But I wasn't aware of Specsavers. But these are all questions, really. The whole thing needs to go to the North CCG for an answer. But certainly, all members have been getting regular dentistry updates, because I've seen them coming out.
Jo?
I wanted to reiterate the thing about ear syringing. It's been go to Specsavers and pay for it for several years, from my understanding, because this is something that happens to people when they have hearing aids fitted as well. That's one of the things they often get sent off to do. And again, my experience in the south is that. But my experience is also NHS dentists are doing their thing. My son sees one. And that's all I can add as anecdotal. But again, it just supports that sadly, we're doing things differently. Roll on putting the CCGs together.
Keith?
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, like Margaret, I've had correspondence about the blood test issue. At the time, you could get one on the day in Coventry, but it was a three-week wait in Warwickshire, in the north of Warwickshire. And I've corresponded with Adrian at CCG, who said effectively, things will be sorted out in September. It's September and it hasn't worked. We really need the same level of healthcare in Nanton, Bedworth and North Warwickshire that they get in. So can we actually haul the CCG back into this committee to actually get some proper answers? Because it's unacceptable. We get the worst healthcare in the area with the lowest life expectancy and the biggest demand.
Thank you for that. Nigel?
Thanks, Chair. I'm not going to comment on the other issues, because I think they are a matter for the CCGs. And I'm sure, I know there are CCG people on the call who may want to comment. But I have been in communication with NHS England directly over the last couple of weeks around dentistry. And obviously, they've issued a statement, or they've sent me a statement, which I'm happy to share with the committee after this meeting. It's a little bit too long to put in the chat, unfortunately. But essentially, what they're saying is that obviously dental practices are having to prioritize the safety of their patients and to take additional precautions. And this may be limiting the number of slots. And that will have a different impact on different NHS dental practices, depending on what proportion, so depending on the size of their NHS contract and what proportion of their work is NHS and private. They do suggest that all dental services who do NHS work should be continuing to do so. There is an issue about what happens when those slots become full. And if they have private slots available and their NHS slots are full, they will include, they will make an offer, if you like, for people to use the private slots. But clearly, they'll have to pay for those. But that doesn't mean that they shouldn't get an NHS slot. It just means it shouldn't be on the same, the same day. One of the issues that they have highlighted to me is that it would be helpful if there are specific practices where this is not happening, if I could let them know. So if Margaret particularly has an issue with a particular practice, if she could let me know, I'm happy to pass that information on to them, so that they'll pick that up.
Thank you very much for that, Nigel. And yes, if you could pass on the details you've received to members, that would be appreciated. June?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Yeah, I have to reiterate the points that councillor Bell and councillor Condecor has said. There has certainly been a dreadful way. I had to wait three weeks for a blood test when my doctor said I needed one. And I know others are in a similar position. I am very, very concerned about people not, who may have problems with a dentist appointment or not being able to get one at all, especially if they don't have the funds to pay for the private treatment. And of course, they can't actually go to, you know, there is nowhere else for them to go. I do, if I could just mention one other point on the Northern CCG. Because this morning, I spotted something that was telling me that there were major complaints and concerns from a surgery in Nanton. And people who were trying to get appointments, they couldn't get through on the telephone for a week. That they were being seen in the car park. I have no proof of any of that happening. But I was reading that Northern CCG said they are absolutely convinced that everything is working smoothly. I'm sorry, if everything is working smoothly, why are people complaining and making these comments publicly? But I do think the issues about blood tests and NHS dental services, they really need resolving, Chair.
Thank you for that. Well, taking on board all your comments, what I will do initially, Keith, you wanted to come in. Go on quickly.
Yeah, I just wanted maybe the cabinet member to, portfolio holder, to actually comment on the blood tests and how we actually get some response from the CCG. Because it's okay saying, well, it's someone else's problem, but we do need it sorting. So could Les Kayborn give us some commitment to actually push the issue?
Well, Keith, what I intend to do, hold on, hold on, Les. What I intend to do is I intend to write to the CCG with the concerns that, in particular, Margaret has brought forward. I noticed, June, about the car park issue, that's quite interesting, because I've just received my appointment for my flu jab. And that will be in my GP's car park, I presume undercover of some sort. But it is going to be outside undercover. Also regarding syringing of ears, my GP won't do it. I have to go privately on that. And on the dental issue, the answer is no appointments unless it's of an emergency. So there are obviously issues right across the county. And I will be writing to the CCG. Les, you wanted to come in? I think Les has got a problem.
And I can't take up with the Chair.
Are you there, Les? No. Okay, then we will carry on. If necessary, I'll have discussions.
Yeah, I'm fine. Happy to see you.
With Les, as well as I say, write to the CCG. So we're now going on to the next item, which is the progress in restoration and recovery of services in Warwickshire. This, I think, is being given by Anna Hargrave. Anna, are you there?
I am. Morning, everyone.
Good morning. I think we also have with you Sophie Jolks, Helen Lancaster and Rose Unwinz. Yes? Welcome to the hall. Okay. Anna, over to you.
Thank you. Morning, everyone. So I'm going to start this item off, but I'm sure Sophie and Helen will be able to add any further detail to what I'm going to talk through. So just before I start in terms of the detail of the paper, I just wanted to kind of upfront, say that the key message here is that no decisions have been made about any of the service changes that are detailed within this paper, other than that we need to do more work before we make a decision. So that's kind of the key. of the key overriding message today. And today is about seeking your support for us to do more work in order for us to make a decision. So as you recall from previous meetings, our local NHS providers were mandated nationally to make changes to services in order to manage COVID-19 back in March. And indeed, locally, we needed to make some decisions as well in order for us to be able to provide safe and effective services throughout the pandemic. In June, we started the process of restoration and we are now in recovery mode. But of course, this is all being done in the context of COVID still being around. And obviously, discussion of a second wave coming is at the forefront of our mind. So as we restore and recover, we have to do so in a way that reflects how we need to deliver services safely and effectively whilst managing COVID. For the vast majority of services, we have already restored them or in the process of restoring them, either to their pre-COVID state or reflecting some of the innovation that we have seen as a consequence of our response to COVID. However, there are a very small number of services where we need to do some more work before we can make a decision about what the longer term solution might be in terms of how we restore those services. That's either because actually the change that we made has delivered benefits to the patients receiving those services, or where because we still have to manage COVID, it's not just as straightforward as switching the previous services back on. So we need to do further work. And there are three service changes that fall into those categories, which we want to share with you today and get your support to do further work. The first on that list is the 12 neuro rehab beds that were transferred from UHCW to the Central England Rehabilitation Unit at Leamington Spa. This was done to free up acute capacity at UHCW and to ensure that those people who needed neuro rehab continued to receive that rehab during the COVID response. The teams at both SWIFT and UHCW believe that actually this shift, if it were made permanent, could deliver improved outcomes for our population. But of course, we need to understand that and look at the evidence before we indeed make that decision. So what we want to do is talk to patients and carers who have or are using those services to understand their views, look at the clinical outcomes, and before we make a decision on whether we maintain the service at SERU or we indeed move it back to UHCW, if that is what the evidence suggests would be best for patients.
I'm sorry, Anna, could I just interrupt? Somebody's sharing the screen with a COVID figure.
Notice, it is a bit distracting.
It doesn't relate to neuro or what you're talking about. So I presume you haven't got a presentation.
No, I haven't.
If it could be taken down. John, can you take it down, please? I've been trying to message you to do it discreetly. But if you could just take down the presentation, please, John.
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay, Anna.
The second and third service changes relate to Ellen Badger's Aid Centre and Stratford Minor Injuries Unit. Both of these units were closed to support the delivery of services at the Warwick site. So in effect, the staff that deliver services at those sites were redeployed to the Warwick site in order to manage the streams of COVID and non-COVID. And as we approach winter, what has become clear, and this is where Helen certainly will be able to add more detail, is that actually we're not going to be able to switch back to our previous state, because we still need to manage the different streams of patients at the Warwick site. And we need to use our entire workforce to do that from an urgent care perspective. In addition to the operational constraints that we're going to have over winter to turn those services back on, there are the two key factors that we need to engage local people on. One is the fact that actually the services at both of those sites pre-COVID needed to be reviewed in the context of, in the case of Ellen Badger, the development of Ellen Badger Hospital, new primary care facility there, and the opportunities for a community wellbeing hub that is being developed by SWIFT there. And in the case of the Minor Injuries Unit at Stratford, the changing standards relating to urgent care, and actually how we might do that within the physical constraints of the current estate. And then obviously, post-COVID, there's a lot has changed. Many will have heard about the kind of concept of talk before you walk, which is going to be changing how people access services, which is going to be critical for these services. And indeed, there's been changes to urgent care on our borders as well, which means that any initial thinking that we'd done pre-COVID on these services needs to kind of go back to the beginning. And we need to look at what the demand for these services is going to be, what the type of demand is going to be as well. So this is very, very early stages. We obviously need to undertake a full, robust process that includes engagement with our local population. And that engagement will not only help us identify all of our potential options, but also identify what's important to local people in order for us to make an informed decision. We will be developing an engagement strategy to support all of this work. There'll be one for SERU and then one relating to the urgent care. And we would fully anticipate that this committee would have cited that before we implemented it and give opportunity for you to comment on it and make sure that it was going to address our full engagement needs. So I'm going to stop there. I don't know whether Helen or Sophie want to add anything further, but otherwise happy to take questions.
Okay. Margaret?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I think this is a really good opportunity to rethink, as you are doing, where the services are and how they work, et cetera. And I've got one specific question. When you say beds were moved from UHCW for rehabilitation, did you actually reduce the number of beds at UHCW and increase them somewhere else? You just moved the patients, I think, is
You moved the service from the bed. So what it did is it freed up 12 beds at UHCW for acute needs. So it gave them additional capacity from an acute perspective and then utilised beds at the SERU as well. So it was more the service shift rather than a reduction in beds.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't reduce in beds at UHCW. So that's really good. My other point, I have to say this, and it's just in passing, really. I was quite surprised. I probably should have known at all the facilities that are in the south of the county, bedded facilities. We've only got George Elliot Hospital. I'll just brush over that. But I'd like to say that when you, and I'm very interested in this rethinking of urgent care and what's coming down from government and what we're going to do. My plea is, please, I know I'm anticipating the CCGs getting together, but please look across the county and please make sure that we have got facilities everywhere that are needed. And that also applies to rehab. I can understand if it's specialist rehab, we may have to have one centre, I understand that. But rehab generally, we used to have one actually in the north, Bramcott, but that's disappeared. Please look at rehab, so we can get people out of hospital and getting the services they need before they go home. So that's my plea, really, is this is a great opportunity to look across the county and make sure everyone has the services they need where they need them as far as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Keith?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, picking up a lot on what Margaret said. A lot of this rehab, it says in the paperwork, is the only service of Coventry and Warwickshire. And obviously, we're doing things in the short term on an emergency basis, but also we want to then see how we're going to stand things up long term. And I'm most interested in the estate strategies for like the George Elliot and, you know, what things in the future, when we hopefully have more money to reinvigorate services, get put back in various places. So can you just explain the sort of split and how rehab works for people in the north? Is everything now going to Warwick? Or is there a level of it that will eventually return to the north? Thank you.
So this is, in terms of this paper, this is about the neuro rehab, which is a very specialist element of rehab. And Keith, I think what you're asking for is an overview of rehab more generally, if I'm understanding the question, in which case I would need to get some further detail from colleagues in Warwickshire North CCG on that. But in terms of the neuro rehab beds, the beds, the 2B beds that we are talking about here, is that these have been accessed by patients from all three CCGs at the UHCW site until the point of which COVID occurred. And then we have moved them. So in terms of these beds, they are accessed by patients for all three CCGs and indeed some from out of Coventry and Warwickshire as well. But at this, I can't comment today on the wider rehab pathways for Warwickshire North patients. But certainly can get that information from Warwickshire North colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Yes, I think that would be appreciated. And Paul, if you could circulate that to all members. Pam?
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, Anna. I understand what you have been saying and the thinking behind this. You know, I don't think we can really argue that. But I do, perhaps I'm putting you on the spot here, but I'd like to know how many patients at this present time are in both the hospitals, UHCW and SWIFT. I mean, I know we are on the cusp of a rise. We do not know at the moment how severe that's likely to be. And whilst the infection rate is going up, can't deny that, the hospitalisation rate doesn't appear to be going up. I understand it is going up, but not that much. And it is a bit, for me, it's a bit difficult to understand why we are not moving more quickly forward with the general hospitalisation of other specialities.
So I can't answer that question. I think it probably is in my emails from something, but without kind of quickly going through them, I can't get my hand to it. But actually, it might be helpful. Helen, I don't know whether you're able to respond to Pam in terms of how it, what it feels like at SWIFT to give an indication. And obviously, you're talking to the chief operating officers across the patch. So you might well be able to give a view on Pam's question.
Yes, thank you, Anna. Yes, I'm happy to do so. I think what we are across all three organisations, ourselves, George Elliot and UHCW, we are seeing a very rapid return to pre-COVID numbers within the organisation, within each organisation. In fact, we're almost at full capacity across many of, many of the areas. In relation to stepping up and restoring all of the services, all of services are set back up within each of the, within each of the hospitals. And so we meet regularly to talk about how we can support each other through many pathways. There is also an element here of patient choice, whereas some patients are still nervous about attending a hospital for treatments. And so we are also using the independent sector, as many people know, to actually protect what we call our COVID-free pathways to ensure that patients can be cared for in a completely COVID-free environment. And so I can't tell you how difficult it is. And this is one of the most difficult jobs that I've ever had to do. It was really easy to step things down, but to put services back that have a COVID pathway for patients that have been identified as COVID, and then to ring fence beds that then have to be COVID-free, and step up every single service within the acute providers is probably one of the most difficult jobs I've ever had to do. And it will not happen overnight because there are many safety measures and checks and balances that we have to put in place. What I will say is that we are at about 90% of recovery from our, to our pre-COVID numbers. And so it's only been a month or so before we were told, given the go ahead to actually step all of those services back up. So I think each organisation has done a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time to step those back up. And then we have to maintain those services over winter. And we all know the challenges that puts into acute providers with normal winter pressures. And so this is going to be like, a bit like winter on steroids, as we actually have to manage all of those winter pressures with a COVID oversight on that. And it is going to be very, very difficult for the next few months.
Can I just come back, Chairman?
Yes, yeah.
You've just explained, obviously, as clearly as you can about this process. However, we have heard earlier on that one of your very, it may seem an inconsequential service, but phlebotony and blood taking and the results of those tests are extremely important to diagnostics. And if you haven't got the results and you can't get a blood test for, as I understand it, some three weeks in the north, I cannot see how there's an improvement. I mean, that's just a small piece of the puzzle. Pam, you're not even addressing that.
Sorry, Pam. I'm actually representing SWIFT and we have those services in the South.
Oh, well, you're talking here of the adult social care over Warwickshire. I'm sorry if you're just representing SWIFT. I'm talking about the whole of Warwickshire now.
I mean, I can't respond on behalf of the north George Elliot. And so I apologize for that. But those services are running and within the, within the South.
We are, we are going to be writing to the CCG about Margaret's issues. So hopefully, we'll get something back then. I still have three speakers. I've got Gerry, Clive and Joe. So Gerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've sent you an email on Monday about the recommendations
Yes.
on here. And I fully understand why these are coming forward. On the neuro, I think that's, if you like, a fairly simple specialist service, the amount of patients that need it. And I can understand the rationale behind that. And I can see the pathway that is trying to be developed for that neuro rehab service, which can take time and does need time to do that. And on the recommendation 2.2, which is about Ellen Badger and the Stratford Minor Injuries Unit, I think it's a little bit more difficult in the sense of you're asking the scrutiny committee to support the process of doing the business case. My view is always the scrutiny committee is not there to support. Actually, it's for you to present and then bring the business case forward and demonstrate that you've actually done the engagement and built the business case to do that. And it just smacks to me, the recommendation is we're getting a box ticked in the sense of going forward. So I'm unhappy about recommendation number two, Mr. Chairman, on that. And I'm also, this is why I declared an interest on Health Watch, is that Ellen Badger actually approached Health Watch, but then was shut down and there was no more talking going on. Health Watch is very interested in getting the patient voice from this process going forward. And I would hope that that would be built in. But this is more of a question to the chairman than to you, Anna, is that in recommendation number 2.2, I feel I can't support the process that's been proposed here, because actually, it's for the CCGs to actually demonstrate back to the scrutiny committee that they've done the business case and they can actually explain it in more detail. Yes, you can come and present and give us the early warning, which is what this is about. It's an early warning, which is fine. So I think the recommendation, as it's written, is incorrect, really. We should note the presentation, what you've said today, welcome that, and the early notice of that, and fully understand the changes with COVID and how that's going to impact on service provision and the rest of it. So we could take all that, that's great. And then say, yes, go off and do the business case, do the engagement, keep us informed, and actually then come back to us. And hopefully, as indicated, that Health Watch would be involved in that, in that process. Because I'm not quite sure what happened with Ellen Badger and phone calls and things, or whether it got caught up between different people or whatever on there. So I'd be saying, Mr. Chairman, personally, I can't support recommendation number two, because it's asking me to support something in a process of developing a business case. In other words, you're buying me into the, into the business case is a point of principle. In other words, you're buying me into, into the business case is a point of principle. And I can't support that because I don't know what the outcomes will be. And I think I'd rather note what's there today and then allow Anna and others to go off and do the work. And actually, let's have a, a good discussion. May well support it all at the end of the day, and some of it will be very sensible stuff, I'm sure. But I think it's, it just sort of, it preempts that. So it's probably not your fault, Anna, but actually, it's just the way the recommendation has been written, really. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Gerry. I had actually made several notes regarding the recommendations and was going to discuss them at the end. I think you made, you do make some valid comments about the purpose of the ONS committee. Clive?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, I know I'm sort of the guest on this committee, but I'm really concerned about the, the statement in 2.2 of the making out of the full business case that Gerry's just mentioned. And my questions really are, you know, why now? Why this now? Because a full business case usually presages something pretty serious in terms of change. And I have to air the suspicion that there is in the Shippstone area that this presages an intention to close. However, I must acknowledge that in the presentation by Anna, we did get the mention of a wellbeing hub. And I'd really like a bit more detail about what being, you know, exactly what, what that would comprise.
Thank you, Clive. Anna, do you want to come back?
In terms of, if I address in the kind of the concept of the full business case, I think it's, we use the full business case as, in essence, a well thought out document that looks at our options and in essence appraises them, which is in effect what we are doing, that there are potentially multiple options that we, we do need to consider and that we need to go through due process in terms of engaging, look at the evidence and so on. And, and absolutely, there is no predetermined decision. We're saying we're going to have to undertake a robust process to make sure that we make the best decision that we can. So there is no kind of predetermined answer. We want to go through the process. And I accept all of the comments around, in essence, your support for the business case. That is, in essence, being driven by the process that we are working to that's been in appendix two. And I agree, actually, what we need for you at this stage is, is for you to note it and to, in essence, that early heads up that we are going to be doing this and we're going to want to come back and talk to you. So that is, in essence, why we're here today. But I think the critical bit in this, which is slightly different to other circumstances, that these services are currently closed or they've had a change to them. And we need you as a committee to be cited on that because the changes were made in, as an urgent change. And in essence, we've got a duty to keep you informed on that. So in effect, we're saying, we're keeping the services as per the change whilst we do additional work. And in essence, kind of asking for support for us to undertake the process before we make a decision. In terms of Ellen Badger, Sophie, I think perhaps you would be better able to answer this than me at this stage.
Thank you, Anna. And so in terms of the Ellen Badger development, there's made significant progress on that recently around the GP practice submitting their business case to CCG consideration and the trust business case due to go in November. And that is looking at significant investment in the Ellen Badger development, which would include a locality hub, bringing together all Shipperton home nursing, district nursing, community nursing, and really getting a facility that supports that integrated care. There's not many of them across the country. It's actually quite unique that we've been able to get all of the partners together to look at doing something quite different in Shipperton. And the other thing to say around the wellbeing centre that we're looking at, we are working with public health colleagues to really understand what the needs are of that community. And the other person that we're working quite closely with is Trevor Russell around the partnership that's been set up in Shipperton. And we're kind of welcoming his views and together with the community about how we work together to make sure that meets the needs of the community. And the whole premise, I suppose, of the Ellen Badger development is about keeping people well within their community. And post-COVID, that's going to become even more important. And just, I don't know if I'm okay to do this, but just to, because it links in, in terms of the engagement on Ellen Badger, I think there was a comment about Health Watch. We're still absolutely committed to working with Health Watch on the engagement piece and recognise the skills and benefits that springs for the project. I think there's been a change in personnel there, but they're part of the communication cell for the Ellen Badger development. And we'll also be looking to work with them on further engagement we need to do on the paper that you're seeing today.
Could I just break in and ask you, Trevor Russell? There was a mention of a name there, but I've no idea, you know, why, why he's being mentioned.
He's chairing, okay, so he's chairing at the moment. I think Joe Bach's on the, got my hand up. So he's chairing at the moment a board. I don't, I can't remember the exact names.
I can, I can give you all the details if you want. Shall I step in?
Thanks.
Is that okay? First of all, I put my hand up. I've got to declare an interest because I, I forgot to. I'm a trustee of the League of Friends raising the money to do a lot of this work at the Ellen Badger. Trevor Russell is my not immediate, but predecessor in as a Shipperton South District Councilor of some years ago. And he chairs what is called the Shipperton Health and Wellbeing, I'm not sure if we call ourselves a partnership. I can't remember if it's got a P on the end or not. But it's a group of everybody who's involved in this process and looking, and looking at social isolation and various other things. And he is the person chairing that. And that's why Trevor is being referred to. And I've now declared my interest. So is that okay?
Okay, Clive?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. Well, you're next, Joe.
Yeah, sorry, that was basically to declare my interest. But I would just say that any concerns that there are rattling around Shipperton are the sort of things that rattle around in communities when things are changing. And that there really shouldn't be any suspicions. I'm all over it like a rash. So that, so are the, so are the GPs. You know, trust me, the balloon will go up if things really do look nasty. And you'll be hearing about it all over adult social care and health OSC. So at the moment, things seem to be going along swimmingly. And I'd say that we are lucky, from what Sophie said, it really is a unique, well, not completely unique, but it's a very unusual thing that we're doing, putting together all these offers, particularly with the health and wellbeing side of it as well. But, you know, a community garden and all sorts of things, you know, it's going to be fab, absolutely fab.
Good. Thank you, Joe. Margaret?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a general point here. It's not the first time that poor Anna has been asked to account for what's happening in the North. And I've gone through, and I apologize if I've missed anyone, but I've gone through the participant list. I can see no one from Warwickshire North CCG and no one from George Elliott Hospital. And yet they're very often the topics of our discussions. And I wonder what we can do to encourage them to come to these meetings and help them to realise how important it is that they answer for their actions and their responsibilities and let poor Anna concentrate on her job instead of everybody's. So, and I really appreciate that you're always here, Anna, and, and they are noticeable by their absence, Chairman.
Thank you for that, Margaret. I have made, I have noted that. Let me see, Helen?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just coming back to recommendation 2.2. I agree with Gerry and Clive that, you know, it does look like we're buying into something that we don't know what it actually is at the moment. And I think when you do hear words like business case, same as streamlined and rationalised, knowing those, you start to worry that something's already decided. I wonder if we can change the support to just notes, maybe in that recommendation for what she, adult social care viewing scrutiny committee to note that the NHS South Water Clinical Group in collaboration with Swift will undertake, something like that. And we could probably, probably agree to that. And then trust Anna that when she does the business case, of course, it will be all sides of the, of the case. And then we scrutinise that. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Helen. I have actually got some suggestions there when we, when we finally finished the, the discussions. So thank you for that. We will do. Rose, you wanted to come in?
Hi, it was just, just a quick one, obviously, to say that I, although I'm not sort of on the exec team, I'm, I do represent Warwickshire North and Coventry and Rugby. And I have taken notes of what everyone has said. I do agree, it would be great for us to come back and sort of discuss the particular issues in depth. So although there is no exec representation, we've not, we're not just pretending it's not happening. We are, I am taking notes and I will make sure that, it's obviously in with your letter as well, Wallace, we'll make sure that something goes back.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much for that. Okay, are, are there any other questions for members? I haven't got any hands up. So we're coming back to the recommendations. Ah, Les? I think? No?
Thank, thank you, Chair. I am meeting regularly about once a month with the chief exec of George Elliott, as indeed is councillor Lily Jackson from Nun Eaton and Bedworth. Although the last meeting, there was only me there. So if people want to send me any issues, then I'll raise them when we next meet.
Okay, thank you. I, I hope everybody heard that. It was a little bit quiet, but Les was asking that if there were any issues, send them to him regarding North Warwickshire, et cetera. Right, back to the recommendations. Well, we've got one or two issues. I don't know whether this will help, but if you're going to recommendation 2.1, it says for Warwickshire Adult Social Care and Health Scrutiny Committee to support. If we take out the word support and put note in, and on 2.2, going to where it says, Swift to undertake the process, we actually delete up to there and put to note the process to develop, et cetera. Would, would those two alterations be in agreement for members?
I wonder if we need to take out both support, you know, supporting 2.1, I agree with, and also there's the word supporting 2.2? No? Maybe not?
Really, on 2.2, we're just noting really what, what's been.
Yeah.
Anna and the crew to get off and devote.
Can I just say that I don't have any problem with it at all. I just kind of like that noted. I understand what they're talking about with their business case. And I, I'm not quite as suspicious as some people. They just say Anna knows me well enough to know that I'm suspicious.
I will make note of your comments, Joe. I don't think it's suspicion, it's just that we are. With those changes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. And thank you very much, Anna, and for, for your team. You're, you're always most welcome to come along.
Thank you.
We, we do appreciate the time that you and your team do give to this overview and scrutiny committee. We might not always agree, but we do appreciate the discussions that we do have. Thank you very much indeed to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to COVID-19 position and recovery. I think it's Nigel?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I will, I will take this. Shade has very kindly presented, produced a short presentation for us, which I'll run you through very quickly. Before I do, Chair, just a note on the last item. I'm not sure George Elliott were invited to this meeting. So I think it might be a useful action to, for us to actually liaise with them to identify who they would like to be a regular invitee. Because absolutely, I agree with councillors that there are almost always issues, even if there isn't a specific item on the agenda, that we would want to discuss relating to provision in the North.
Well, thank you for that. I have to confess, I was under the impression it was, we automatically invited them. But well, obviously, Paul's listening in and we'll take that on board. Thank you.
Noted, Chair, noted. In terms of COVID, if I can just find the right slides, and this is the presentation that you saw before, for the right item this time. Just very briefly, I mean, members will be very, the committee will be very familiar with, with the current situation. Obviously, there are, you know, daily briefing, the information is available on the CSW site as well, broken down. We are at over 3,350 cases now, and the rate is rising as it is pretty much everywhere across the country. The current rate of 36.51, which actually, for the last seven days, that's 36.51 per 100,000, is significantly higher than it was not long ago. I think the comparison with the West Midlands Combined Authority below, which is at 103, is, gives a sense of perspective and proportion to that. But it is still a cause for concern, I think, to all of us. I would like to make the point, and I know this has been made frequently in terms of the national data sets and the national graphs, that, that these graphs are misleading because all of those things that you see on the left hand side of the graphs around April and May were at a time when there was no community testing and related home unit testing in hospital. And actually, if we'd had the level of testing that we have now, then those graphs would be off the page. So we're not at that level. However, concern remains and we need to make sure we are as vigilant as we possibly can be. Looking at those rates, there is some variation across the council, across the county, rather. Members will be very aware that rugby has been a particular concern over the last few weeks. And a number of actions have been put in place locally there, and a number of communications have been directly targeted within that, that area. Nun Eaton and Bedworth has started to rise again and now sits at 45.4, as you'll see there. I am aware there is a meeting tomorrow between public health and the chief, and I think the leader of Nun Eaton and Bedworth Borough Council to look at what we collectively do to address those issues and the rise in that area. Shade has summarised for us the outbreak management and where we are. Things seem to be working really well in terms of the outbreak management, so the response to specific outbreaks. They have been across a whole range of, of different types of organisation, types of services, types of workplaces. But, but there does seem to be a really good collective response across health, social care, public health, local government generally, and the emergency service and voluntary sector. In terms of testing, it appears, I'm really nervous to say this, because I'm expecting a usual backlash of cases and examples where that's not the case. But it appears that at least the majority of the problems that existed with the national testing site have been relieved. That services seem to be offering tests more readily than they had been a previous, a couple of weeks ago. The, obviously, the regional sites are established, the, the mobile testing units are in place, and the walk-in sites, which have been talked about, are being identified too, and are about to or are in the process of going live. It appears that to date, the work with Warwick University and actually with Coventry University to ensure that those establishments do not suffer the, the responses that we've, or the, the problems that we've had in some parts of the country with students returning, have been successful so far. And that seems to be, and engagement is very strong with those two organisations. You have the highlights in your presentation of the recovery survey. I don't think there's much more to add to this, really. Not surprisingly, there's plenty of news out there. Most people know what the symptoms are. Lots of people add in a few extra ones. It's really important, I think, as we've had in other discussions in other places with members, that, that people recognise that things like runny noses and whatever, you know, the normal cold symptoms are not symptoms. that people recognise that things like runny noses and whatever, you know, the normal cold symptoms are not symptoms. I think the most concerning thing is here, is the 14% who are unsure if they would be able to isolate, and what actions we can take around that. And I think that's probably as much of an overview as I'd like, or unable to give at this stage. I didn't mention, I probably should have done, that as of this morning, there are 18 patients in hospital who are COVID positive across Coventry and Warwickshire, and four in ITU. Now, that's a situation clearly, again, that reflects the rising overall numbers of cases, but is always, you know, a week or two behind, but that is significantly higher than a couple of weeks, or even, you know, a month ago. Quite clearly, it doesn't, at this stage, compare with the situation earlier in the year.
Thank you, Nigel. Nigel, do we have an update on the Northlem school situation?
I don't have it. I don't have updates on individual settings today. I've only got the general update. I'm sure we can provide one. I'm just trying to see if I've got one. Secretly delaying talking so I can see if I've got one in my inbox somewhere. No, I haven't. I'm happy to get individual details across, or I'll ask Shade to do on particular incidents.
Yeah, if you could let me know an update on what's happening at Keithlem, Northlem, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, will do.
Thank you. Margaret?
Thank you. Nigel, I'd like to know what's happening with this new app that people, hopefully a lot of people are downloading, and how that will integrate with, if it does, what the work and how it'll impact on what you're doing?
I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that question. I'm sorry, this is, although I'm covering this for Shade, I normally am very much on top of these things. Many of you will know that I was out last week for an inquiry that the council is, has been involved in, a public inquiry. So I don't have the latest details. So what I will have to do is update you on that again. I can do that, and that actually would probably be helpful for the whole committee.
Yes, please.
Because there is quite a lot of movement, and there is particularly, there are some expectations about use of the app, for example, of entering particular premises, including our own, actually, which I think will be helpful for members to have a briefing on. So I'll get you a briefing out after the meeting.
Thank you, Nigel. Jo?
Sorry, just a quick question. The ITU beds that are occupied, have you any idea of the age profile? Is it following the same sort of curve as, actually it's called curve, but pattern as before?
My understanding, and I don't know about the specific ones that are there at the moment, is that it is still around older people or people with underlying health conditions.
Yep, so it's, yeah, it's the same, but a much smaller group. We hope it continues to be like that. Great, thank you. Thanks.
Keith?
Thank you, Chair. We heard on the radio this week about some of the good work being done in rugby with our tracing and taking some of the history of some of these cases back to people meeting in a certain car park and various other things. So I think we are doing really, really well with the local contact tracing now. I hope we get some feedback, both to the people doing the tracing, that it's really important, and some more case studies of the type of places where we're tracing these stuff back. Because I think that gives people an idea of how diverse the areas of contact are. Nigel also mentioned the universities, and there was an unfortunate incident in all the media this morning about parties at the University of Coventry. A lot of the cases, or about half the cases in Germany, I think quite a lot in the UK, are from people coming in from abroad. You know, people going on holidays, and then those cases work their way through, and particularly in Germany, where I've done a lot of research, foreign travel brings in new ways of cases. So I am very concerned that the universities might host a lot of cases, which might not actually generate any health impacts within them, but actually then spread out. So a bit more detail. And I understand the university work has its own testing facilities, and they're actually doing the testing, which actually gives us the other problem, that if the University of Warwick tests all the students arriving, they get a really large spike of positive cases reported, but actually it's just because they've tested 3,000 people and they found 60 were positive. So the other thing we're lacking, and we don't get it in our daily briefing, is how many people were tested each day. And we have this in Nuneaton, where we get a spike on a certain day, and it might be the day that the test centre is at Harefield Road. So it looks like cases have trebled in a day, but actually Tuesday might be the only day we actually have the mobile test centre there. So I think we do need to know how many people were tested each day when we actually get the daily figures for Nuneaton and Rugby. Actually, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. Did you want to come back, Nigel?
Yeah, a few things probably. I mean, first of all, thanks Keith for his comments about rugby. I said, one of the things that's been really important about the work the team did in rugby is they were able to do quite a lot of segmentation of the population, so they could work out exactly which groups, as well as which locations, and target those groups. And that's the work that's been going on this week ahead of the rise that we're starting to see in Nuneaton and Bedworth, and that's one of the things that they're planning to discuss tomorrow. So that same kind of detailed work is being prioritised for Nuneaton and Bedworth. In terms of University of Warwick, yes, they do have their own testing facility, linked to CW, I believe. And I recognise the point. I think there is something about the fact that the University of Warwick tends to attract a large number of international students and a large number of students from a broad geographic area, whereas Coventry University generally, and I know these are generalisations, is more of a local university. So I think there is a reason why Warwick might have taken that route. I should say that the University of Warwick have joined our strategic meetings and are very closely engaged with us. So our kind of strategic cell meetings, they are a part of those discussions with the council, with the police and others. So we are able to get a good grip on what's happening there, and also able to support and advise them where that's appropriate. So I think that relationship is really helpful. In terms of testing data, I'll see what we can do in terms of sharing the numbers tested. We do have access to, and I don't know how this quite works, positivity rates, which does give, you know, an indication of whether this is the result of a surge in tests or whether it's actually because more of the tests that are carried out are positive. The only reason I hesitate is because the collation of tests and how many tests are done comes from a multitude of sources, and I don't know whether we can get the regional testing sites, the LTUs, the MTUs, et cetera, the in-hospital testing, all the other bits and pieces together in one place for a daily update on testing. If we can, I'll certainly talk about, well, I'll talk to business intelligence about what we can and can't do, but we'll provide what we can.
Keith, you wanted to come back?
Going on first. Rather than throw the lot of work, just to say if the test units in Nuneaton one day or rugby the next, it might put those spikiness in those graphs, we get a bit in context. As I said, there was one day when there was like 16 in Nuneaton, and that may have been a feature of the fact it was a testing day. So I think a bit of context does help us, and like other days, there's been big numbers in rugby, and then a big fall in rugby. And so if it is all down to just where that mobile unit moves around, we then don't get a false bit of information from a particularly high day. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we can certainly do that. And I think the other issue is where we have an outbreak. You know, one or two cases can spark a lot of testing in a particular area that will pick up more too. So you're right, absolutely, there are a range of factors that can make it look quite volatile. It is why the seven-day rate is actually better than the how many there were yesterday.
Okay, thank you, Nigel. Helen?
Thanks. Just a question for Nigel. You may not be able to answer this, Nigel, but I was just wondering about the rate of potential deaths. So unfortunately, as we get more people in hospital, we may see deaths again. And I just wonder if they will be on the same trajectory as perhaps they were before, or whether because we've got different ways of treating COVID, that we know whether the death rate will be slightly less. I mean, again, as I say, you may not know that, but I just wondered if you've got any indication. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, the indications are that we, you know, we wouldn't expect the same death rates as they were previously for a whole host of reasons about, you know, a lot of things have been put in place over the last few months that would help to reduce the death rate, and also the fact that, you know, the NHS has learned the best way to deal with individual cases, and I think there's been some national feedback about the fact that actually, you know, treatment for COVID is better than it was at the start of the pandemic. I think we also have much better protection for care homes than we could have at the start of the process. We know there's no discharge. There will be no discharge of positive patients. Not that there was very much discharge of positive patients in Warwickshire previously, but certainly nationally, there was a lot of discharge of positive patients into care homes. We have that guarantee that we won't do that. People will not be discharged without a negative test. So I think there are a whole range of factors that are in place, that weren't in place, that should keep that. But, you know, it's a real hostage to fortune, isn't it, to absolutely commit to that?
Thank you. Now, are there any other members wishing to raise a question? I haven't got any hands up, so as you all know, that this item will be a permanent fixture present on our agendas to come. So Nigel, perhaps you would take back our thanks to the team on the work that they're doing. It is very much appreciated, and we know exactly how much work is going into protecting Warwickshire. Thank you.
I'll certainly do that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we're moving on to our One Organisational Plan Quarterly Performance Progress Report. I think it's Pete or Becky. I'm not sure which is going to kick off.
Apologies, Chair. So the last item had two aspects to it. So one was the COVID element, and the other one was about the recovery. So you've got a presentation now, little come-up, which Becky Hale's going to take you through.
Oh, okay, fine.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Chair. So my colleagues will chip in, but we were asked to give an update as to where we are around our recovery. So I'll try and get through this as quickly as possible so that we can take some questions. I guess the first thing to say is that, of course, we're still responding, and we're still planning. So before I get on to focus on recovery, just wanted to be really clear about that. A lot of joint work with our health colleagues, which we've already touched on earlier, but a lot happening around, obviously, the response to positive cases, the work that we're doing around the Phase 3 response in the NHS, and now the requirement for the Adult Social Care Winter Plan, which we are actively working on as a system at the moment. We're doing a lot of work around search planning to support discharge capacity. We've got the infection control funding for the care markets, a whole host of work around kind of reacting and responding to the support needed from the market. And just to say that we're still doing that across a Coventry and Warwickshire footprint wherever possible to really bring together health and care across the sub-region, so we can manage our resources as effectively as possible. So that's kind of the first thing to say. So moving on then to the next slide, which is just a reminder of our recovery priorities. So I'm not going to kind of focus on this, but obviously, these are the key recovery priorities that the council has agreed that specifically relate to health and care. So if we move on in the slides, again, this is just a reminder for people that this is what is in our COVID-19 council recovery plan. And again, the next slide has got priority three and four, just as a reminder for people. So, moving on to the next slide, just wanted to give a sense about how we are governing and making sure that we've got real connection around what is happening to recover services and provision in Warwickshire, and ensuring that the council priorities that were agreed are also being picked up. So we, within People Directorate, have a task and finish group, which is pulling together all of the requirements from the council plan, and also the things that we've identified across children and families, public health, adult social care and strategy and commissioning that need to be delivered. All of those actions are in progress with a number completed. We've got governance arrangements in place where we will monitor and ensure that key milestones are being delivered and that we are on track with what needs to happen. And as you've said, Chair, we will be bringing updates to this scrutiny committee around the detail of that as we move forward. And we're working to progress prevention fund investment bids. So I'll go into a little bit more of the detail now as to where we are in relation to recovery. So next slide focuses around the investment fund bids that we are looking to, well, not looking to, we are actively working on at the moment, and they absolutely link to the council plan priorities for COVID-19 recovery. So we're currently working on our proposals with a view to making recommendations to Cabinet in probably December of this year around those investment fund bids. Next slide. So just some key features that I just wanted to give across public health, adult social care and strategy and commissioning. So a lot of work happening around the health impact assessment in relation to COVID-19, and making sure that we're making best use of that across the health and care partnership, that it's informing the refresh of our health and wellbeing strategy, and also, obviously, our place-based activity. We're doing additional work around community health checks, so that we can start to bring those back online. We've got a focus around domestic abuse, which has been something that we've talked about a number of times, and really ensuring that we've got the right targeted comms and a real focus on how we're supporting people throughout the next few weeks and months. We've got the flu vaccination programme, which was, we've discussed a couple of times, and there's a lot of joint work happening around overseeing the implementation and the prioritisation of that programme. Hopefully, people will be well aware of the work that we've been doing around suicide prevention, and really focusing on how we improve and target our comms around suicide prevention. And then we've been doing quite a bit of work around creative care, so we've had some short-term projects, some of which have been recognised nationally that have really made an impact, and we're focusing on the next phase of the commissioning process in that. Moving on then to adult social care delivery, and I'm sure Pete may wish to chip in or at least answer some of the questions. Adult social care is currently well positioned, actually, in responding to the current position and winter pressures. Staff are largely working from home but are out and visible and delivering their assessment and review activity where possible and safely face-to-face. A real focus on catch-up of reviews, which were temporarily suspended as a result of COVID. A real focus, as we've talked about with our NHS colleagues, around the new hospital discharge guidance and how we support people following their discharge from hospital in the short, but then the medium term. And also the recommencement of continuing healthcare assessments with our CCG colleagues and ensuring we're connected around that. Next slide, please. A whole host of work happening to re-establish projects that we were working on that did pause temporarily, but we are now bringing back online. So cabinet decision around net growth and the implementation of that, the new payments process for domiciliary care providers. integrated care record and and falls prevention. And I guess just just a a couple of points and and obviously really important about how the workforce is is feeling and and it feels generally positive and I and I can say that across adult social care, but also strategy and commissioning and and public health, albeit, as you can imagine, people are very busy. The technology is working for us and and I guess today another testament of that. And that we are really trying to focus on on wellbeing. And we're we're doing some new things at the moment about how we will support the workforce with wellbeing through the winter. And next slide is just an update around people's strategy and commissioning. So again, people in my area working from home but but connecting well with partners and providers. A real focus around provider engagement and support with with emphasis around understanding the viability issues in the market and really being clear about how we will support our providers with what is an uncertain and difficult time. And as I've indicated earlier, current focus is populating our Warwickshire Adult Social Care Winter Plan and the search plan with our NHS colleagues. And continuing the focus around infection control and resilience assurance for our care homes. And that is a Coventry and Warwickshire Health and Care Programme that we are operating at the moment. And one of the key things that we've been doing in strategy and commissioning is a recovery and restoration for commissioned services. So working through how we safely stand back up commissioned services and and ensure that that is done in a way that is safe but also is responsive to the the ups and and downs and and the wave that is coming around Covid nineteen. And as I've indicated earlier, a focus around re-establishing our projects. So I think that was all I wanted to kind of say. Real whistle stop and I'm obviously happy to ask, answer any questions, as I'm sure Nigel and Pete will as well.
Thank you very much, Becky. I do have just one question for you. Going back to the slide, the recovery update, public health. The mine bugs, mine bus are going to targeted priority areas. Do we have a list of where those priority areas are?
We do, and I can I can share that and ask the team to share that with you. It's been focused around areas where we we know we've had suicide clusters or or real evidence that, you know, there are higher concerns around mental wellbeing. So we are targeting those areas. So I will ask the the team to share a list with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points. Kind of thank you for that. Very useful. And one is the the increasing evidence around recovery from Covid, if you've had it, and some of the issues around that. I'd be interested to know if we're picking up on any of that. You know, it can take anything up to six months, I'm told, or longer than to to start feeling anything like you used to be. And that that is from some feedback I've had, anecdotally, is causing problems for mental health and other issues. That's the other one. And I might as well get this question in now rather than next on the performance. Is the I note the percentage placements for adults in provision of good or outstanding CQC is is stalled, basically, which gives me some cause for concern if and I know CQC suspended inspections and the rest of it. And I'm just wondering, is that the particular reason or is there something underlying that we need to keep a very close eye on? Because I know the commentary in the performance commentary on on that, but I think that's something that we should be fully aware about as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky or Pete, do you want to come back?
Yeah. So so the first question, Gerry, we public health colleagues are focusing on some work around kind of the the rehab needs of people who have experienced Covid, because, as you say, that, you know, there is evidence that that people are kind of having longer-term impacts of of that. So there is some work happening to understand what what that looks like and and what that might mean for the support offer that that we need. And so that is on the on the agenda and it is something that is being picked up. So hopefully, we'll be able to give further updates around that as as the work is scoped and undertaken. And picking up your point about CQC and and quality, and you'll see from the response that, you know, we've we're undertaking some specific work to understand actually what is contributing to that. Now, clearly, the fact that the CQC are not going in means that if you were requiring improvement and you've made improvements, well, they're not going in and they're probably not going to be in going in for some some time in some settings to move you from one rating to the other. But it's not just that. I think there are other issues that that we do need to to kind of look at and understand as to to what is happening. And so it is a focus for us. And I I suppose just just to say in in terms of assurance, we've continued throughout this to focus around quality. We've continued to have our service escalation panel, which is looking at those services across the county where we've got quality concerns and we are focusing our resource on working with them. But it is it is a concern and it is something that we're seeking to understand more so that we can target some of our resource and and work with the CQC around how we make those improvements.
Sorry, Mr. Then just on that last point, is is are you finding is it a spread across the county with care homes? Is it a particular areas or anything? Or is it just a general feedback that you you're getting? Because I know, like in rugby at the moment, everything's at level five, so nobody's going in at at all except the staff. And so I understand the reason of that, but I'm just wondering whether is that is that yeah, it's spread across everywhere?
Yeah. And and I think that's the key thing that we want to to kind of get underneath, because, you know, when you look at it broadly, you know, it it's not giving us enough information about are there particular areas or or particular areas of delivery of 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 residential care because of the the various needs that they meet that is causing us kind of more issues in terms of requires improvement. So that will be a key feature of of the work so that we can target the work that we're doing.
Thank you very much, Becky. Keith?
Thank you very much. With people trapped in the homes for six months, many of them, and carers providing a lot of, yeah, the people caring for their partners, whatever, getting burnt out both physically and mentally. Normally, there'd be a transition to some of those people going into care homes who have been cared for. And obviously, there must be some sort of delayed pent-up demand. Were were people sort of holding back, putting their partners into a a care setting? Do we have any sort of figures for that? And is there anything that we're sort of proactively doing to sort of look at those people and how we we sort of A measure how many they are and B do some transition or something or or something to help them? And yeah, they're they're holding the fort at the moment and they may be very reluctant to think about putting someone into care at the moment. But obviously, that just means that when things do get better on the Covid, there may be a a rush of burnt-out people and yeah, I I really think we've got a tsunami of problems coming forward at once people are no longer afraid to put their partners into care.
And so I suppose from from the delivery side, so my area supports people on on social work side. So we'll do the assessment. I I don't believe there is a backlog of people waiting to go into care. So if we look at the number of people going into care or receiving care and support during the Covid response, I think it's probably quite consistent with what we'd expect. And so for people who are struggling in their own homes, we're increasing support. And we're still making admissions, permanent admissions to residential placements. And the the area that we, there is likely to be some additional work that we need to do is where people have, we've not applied for continuing healthcare, so that was suspended during part of the Covid response. And now we're going through a a piece of work for the the CCGs, the Clinical Commissioning Groups, to pass people across to us who they believe are social care, have social care needs. And for us to pass people across to them who we believe have continuing healthcare needs. And but but I don't, I haven't, I can't see anything in my in my statistics to suggest that we've got people who were at home who should be in care homes.
And and I suppose just just to add to that, I think the the discussions with the market would would support that and and where the 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 probability is, is that it's self-funders who are choosing maybe at this point not to move into a into a care home. And so we are doing some work to to kind of understand what what is the difference in different impact around those who will have support from either health or or adult social care and self-funders within the care market with a view to doing some kind of targeted communications across the market. The other thing that that just just to say is that clearly, this is an issue across the the country and the region. So ADAS have identified doing some some work around the care home market and understanding what the position and and the potential future of of the market is in in light of the Covid response. And that's something that we're actively engaged in as well. And that will start to come to fruition over the next few months.
Okay, thank you both very much. Keith, you wanted to come back?
Yeah, just to say, when that research and information comes out, it'd be very useful to see it to see how things have changed, because it's all guesswork on our part. And I know that you'll have a lot of information and be doing lots of research. That'd be useful to have the feedback.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you very much. I've got no more hands up. So Becky, Pete, thank you both very much for the presentation. And as I've said to Nigel, please take back our thanks to your teams for the work that they are doing on our behalf. It is very much appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay, on we go to One Organisation Plan Quarterly Performance. I think that's back to you, Pete.
It is back to me. It is. I've got a presentation, so I think that'll come up in a second. And so the the you've got two reports in your in your pack. And one is for the full year out of the One Organisational Plan. And so that's a full year effect of our performance. And then you have one which is around the council plan, which is our new plan going forward in the first quarter of that. And so what I've got is a a presentation. And the presentation has nothing in it that isn't in your in your reports. And but this is just a summary of of that that information. So I shall. Yes, so the recommendation that you've got in regards to the last year's One Organisational Plan full year performance, and you've asked to consider and comment on the on the progress. And for both of these reports, they go to they go to Cabinet. And so this is a summary paper of of what goes through to Cabinet. And as you'll be aware, the One Organisational Plan, the high-level aims are stated here. And the ones that really are in relation to adult social care and social care delivery around Warwickshire's communities and individuals and that they're safe, the support to be safe and healthy and and independent. And overall, for both years, we've got sixty-four key business measures across the whole council. And of them, nine are specific to adult social care. And and just in terms of our normal business indicators, we've got about twenty-five business indicators. So this is a subset of of some of the other information that we look at. And when we're looking at last year's full year performance, three of the key business measures were achieved and on target, four were behind target and two were not applicable because there wasn't a target and target set. And in terms of the four areas that that didn't achieve target, and and we put some remedial action in, which is referenced in the report, they were, as noted here, so the percentage of placements around good provision, so that's what Gerry was commenting on. And the percentage of women who smoke at the time of delivery in terms of pregnancy. The number of people with a learning disability or autism in an inpatient unit. And then the number of people, number of placements being made into care homes of those over the age of sixty-five. And apologies, in in the report, there's a remedial action there. So it tells you what we're doing to try and improve that. And I always think it's helpful just to put this graph in, which is just around the number of people that we're supporting at any one point in time. And so the green is for two thousand and eighteen nineteen and the pink is for nineteen twenty. And so you'll see, actually, we're quite we're quite stable in terms of the number of people that we're supporting over time. And what I would say that in a graph like this, it doesn't kind of show the level of need that people have and our experiences that people are coming to us later on in their health and social care journey and and having greater needs than they have in 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 the past. But I think it's just a helpful one for us to kind of consider. And in the report, the full year report, it shows our financial performance. And so at the end of last year, my service area came underspent by six hundred and ten thousand pounds, which in the grand scheme of things is very, very small when you look at a budget of, you know, one hundred and forty-eight million. And and that's a a net budget. So the forty million pounds that we get through client contributions obviously isn't in there. And then people in terms of the the strategy and commissioning part of the of the Directorate, they came in with a nine hundred and thirteen pound overspend. In terms of our delivery on savings, we met the the savings that we we wanted to achieve last year. And in terms of our capital programme, there was a thirty thousand pound slippage on that. And so on the last year's performance, that's kind of the summary of those papers. And I don't know, Chair, if you want to take questions now, or I can go on to the next bit of the presentation, which is around quarter one. It's up to you.
We'll take questions now on on what you've given, I think, Pete, and then carry on. Margaret?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. And I I was really pleased to see that women who smoke at the time of delivery has been recognised as something to focus on. And I'll apologise now because I will concentrate on the north because I've been doing quite a lot of work on this and I'm not familiar with what's happening over the rest of the county. But the shocking figure for Warwickshire North is that nearly one in five women are smoking at the time of pregnancy. I find that really difficult to cope with myself, actually, to even get my head around that. And my understanding is that there is little focus at the George Elliot Hospital on this. And of course, everybody encourages people not to smoke, but there's nobody's responsibility. And when I look at the actions you've got there, I think they do need to be more targeted at the places where people go when they're pregnant and the place of the people that they meet. And I know it's everybody's job, but if it's everybody's job, no one's accountable. So it needs to be somebody's responsibility to make sure it's all coordinated. And I know that's not there in the north of the county. I don't know if it is in the rest. So I will plead for more of the focus, please.
Yeah, I'm I'm not an expert on this. Becky may have a bit more information. So my my understanding is public health have got some responsibilities around that. And that's why this is in our People Directorate Performance. And if my memory serves me right, in our first quarter of this year, actually, we're starting to achieve the target. And so I I whether it's an anomaly for the full year or whether we've done some, something's happened in our first quarter, but I'm I'm pretty sure we're on target for this first quarter. And so smoking sensation, I I believe that we've got specific commissioned services to try and support on that. But yeah, I I'm with you in the surprise.
Yeah, I I suppose just just to add and pick up on that, that it was a focus for Health and Wellbeing Board a kind of a week or two ago, I think, when it was. And we did agree a number of things coming out of that to to kind of really refocus and and target. And so, yeah, we we expect there Um. So um, yeah, we we expect there will be further um kind of resource and and focus on it following the outcome of Health and Wellbeing Board, Margaret.
Thank you. That, sorry, Chairman. That's very welcome. This may be one of those areas where the um average figure across the county looks okay. But if you delve down into different regions, it gets very worrying. So just to say that. But um, thank you, Becky. That's really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh Nigel.
As Charles just about to take my hand down because actually Becky said pretty much what I wanted to say. Uh my my only suggestion is, would it be helpful if Paul chairs the paper that went to Health and Wellbeing Board with the members of this committee? Because there are some clear recommendations in that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh. Okay, Pete, um part two.
Part two. So uh so this is our first quarter of this year. Um. And but this under this is under the council plan. Um. So it's uh from twenty twenty to twenty twenty five. Um. Again, the recommendations are the same uh in terms in in terms of considering uh and commenting uh on the first quarter delivery. Um. This some small changes um within the uh two high level outcomes. Um. And um I I've just changed these rounds. So so um but but ours is still in terms of the primary contribution towards the outcomes is around communities and individuals are supported to be safe, healthy and independent. Again, we've got sixty four measures. Um. So it's the same as last year in terms of the number of uh high level uh key business measures at a council level. Um. And we've still got nine. And they have changed. So I've just listed um um just just hopefully to be helpful, um the nine measures, key business measures that um uh 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 to be considered by um this committee. Um. So um you'll see that there are um the smoking ones still there um around uh uh time of delivery. Um. I I don't think there's any there that would be uh a a surprise to anybody. Um. What I would kind of want to point out is that um the um people who contribute towards us achieving these targets is probably broader than it has been before. So we've got some um uh some contributions from the NHS in these. We've got some contributions from the um the Commissioning Support Unit. Um. So um i- it that's that's a good thing, but also sometimes um sometimes a a challenge as well. So in terms of our first quarter, um we've um achieved uh in all of our nine areas of bar two. Um. Which again is similar to last time on the placement. So that's, as as Jerry said, that's maintained uh and our first quarter, the same as last year. Um. But we've also seen um uh we haven't uh prescribed as much equipment to assist people to remain independent as we have um previously. Um. Our explanation for that is around our Covid response. So there has been a dip in um people people being prescribed equipment for a number of different reasons. Um. It hasn't been around service delivery. So our provider of um uh equipment um has continued as they have pre-Covid. Um. But we're starting to see this performance go up. So we're starting more to see more prescription uh in terms of aids and adaptations in people's homes. So my um my uh um forecast on this would be by year end, we will be hitting the targets that we were anticipating we'd set in the first instance. Um. Now, in terms of our our finances, you'll you'll see that um so for adult social care delivery, um currently we're forecasting a eight point three million pound pressure um by the end of the year. So we would, again, this is our our net position after um uh client contributions. Now, what we need to remember within this eight point three is that there is um three point eight million pounds um uh worth of expenditure, which was specifically Covid related in terms of supporting our provider market. Um. And another um four point seven million um expenditure, which was around um supporting hospital discharges. So when you put those two figures together, um that equates to eight uh eight point five million pounds. And we expect this to be wholly set off or offset by um the Covid discharge grant, and so hospital discharge grant, um which was uh one point three billion pounds nationally, or the six hundred million pounds Adult Social Care Infection Control Fund. So if on the basis that we believe that um this pressure will be wholly offset by that, um if you take the eight point five out, we're left with a two hundred and twenty K underspend forecasted at this point, if it wasn't for Covid. Uh. And then in in the strategy and commissioning area, um they're forecasting at this point in time, a two hundred and twenty six um thousand pound uh underspend. Um. In terms of our um savings and our capital programme, um both of those, the targets that we've set and the expend budgets and expenditure that we've got for them, um are on target at this point in time. Thank you very much, Chair. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Pete, uh Joey.
Thank you, Mr. Can I thank you for that, Pete? Um. Turning to the financial commentary. Um. I I note the disability service are forecasting near enough two million overspend. And that's, as it says there, is about increased uh care packages, but it's also relating to um the drug and alcohol issues as well. Um. And then sitting below that, of course, is mental health, and that supported living and talks about the north of the county. So I suppose number one, potentially, we're going to see increases in the numbers as we go through Covid and carry on and having to live with it. So that that number could get far worse than it is. The second question relates to the underspend of one point eight three six, nearly, again, nearly two million on residential nursing um due to the reduction in demand um with care homes. Um. Should we be having any concerns about the future of even like the care market? Because that uh sounds significant. And well, of course, we'll always have this um little bit of a backwards and forwards between NHS and adult social care and the continuing care, which you alluded to, and the ongoing discussions. And I suppose it gives me some concern about the the care market and the sustainability of some of that as we as we again go through um this position and winter and into next year, that potentially we could see that figure getting worse as well.
Yes. So in in terms of the expenditure, um it is very difficult um to um separate Covid and non-Covid at this point. So we're doing lots of work on on trying to calculate whether our increase in in on individual expenditure lines is related to an increase in demand or Covid related or or both. So um what I generally look at is um uh each of my service areas has their budgets and their community based or or placement based. But at at my kind of level, actually, um I I believe everything is 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 the expenditure is relatively stable. So where I'll have increases in one area, I'll have decreases elsewhere. Um. So I I my guess at this point in time, we'll come to a plateau in terms of whether the increase that we've had is related to increase in new demand or Covid related or both. Um. So since April, we've had a an increase in demand, which has been been related to the new hospital discharge guidance. Um. So we have been supporting people because we're getting paid by the NHS to do it, who we traditionally wouldn't support. So they wouldn't normally um be supported by the council. Um. And that's a really good thing because I I think that's dampened down some of our demand, which which is really good. Because actually, we've supported people at an earlier point in their care journey. Um. And um from April to September, those people didn't have to contribute towards their care costs. Um. And once they received the support, they could continue to get it. From September the first, the guidance has changed. So people can get up to six weeks' worth of free care and support um on hospital discharge or to try and prevent hospital admissions. So I think we'll reach the point where that plateau's off. Um. But the work continues. So I'm hope, I I'm pretty sure we circulated the um LGA case study on what we've done during Covid, which has been a change in practice for us in Warwickshire, but it's been a real positive one. And I think that comes on to the second question around residential care uh admissions and reducing. So I believe that um through us supporting people at earlier in their health and social care journey, um actually, what we're doing is we're enabling them to get back to where they were. Um. So whether they've had an hospital admission because of something, a a medical incident, we're actually quick able to get them home quicker and actually support them to get back to where they were quicker, which actually then dampens down um our demand for care homes. You're right, it it does have a impact then on um the um the demand for care home placements. I I think that's a national, that's kind of a national um uh challenge at the moment. Um. And it isn't very, it isn't um consistent across geographical patches. So um I know speaking to some providers within Warwickshire who have a number of homes, they're not reporting um lots of vacancies. So I so I don't think it it it's um it's not a consistent kind of view. Um. I think time will tell on that one. So um once the, once we've got a vaccine and and once we've kind of got post vaccine for six months, I think we'll have a greater understanding of what our longer term needs are uh for care home placements. One thing we need to remember is that Warwickshire has a um a comparably low number of admissions for older people um compared to other authorities. Um. And that's something that is um is really good and supported by um the extra care housing that we've had in the county for for some years. So we start at a relatively low base anyway. So I think my expectation would be over the years, actually, that go there's there's more people year on year going into care homes. So if we can keep it and maintain the current state, uh that would be a real positive thing. We're obviously having those conversations with providers, and providers are acutely aware um that actually um the the market is likely to change around care homes. Um. What that's likely to be, I I I don't know, but there is a lot of discussion and certainly it's a national level um a- around that. So hopefully that answers your question, Sherry.
Thank you very much, Pete. Uh Pam.
Uh. Thank you, Chairman. Um. Pete, can I just refer to um two point five here? Uh. You've answered most of what I was going to ask, but I'm really concerned about the the drop in the good and outstanding regist- uh registration um of provision. It it's going down to uh needs improvement virtually. Um. Is this is obviously because of Covid, but you know, there's no end to Covid. So you know, what what's, what can you put in place to stop nursing homes dropping to a standard that we wouldn't want?
Um. Yeah, I I I think so the um the good and outstanding provision, I think from the end of year last year and the first quarter this year is relatively similar. And I think so. So part of that is that CQC suspended their um their uh inspections. Um. I think in term, in terms of the work that we're doing to try and um uh improve that and get more homes at at good and outstanding, I think it refers back to some of the stuff that Becky was commenting on earlier um um around um, you know, supporting homes, getting out there, um understanding if there's any pockets where we need to, or any pockets of of um geographically patched uh homes that we need to support more, or if there's any themes within uh areas for improvement.
But is the reason for the um needs improvements, is that because they're losing staff or their standards are dropping? Do we know?
Um. So for individual homes, their CQC report will say um what what area they need um improvement in. Um. At the strategic level, I'm not, I'm uh you're there still, Becky. I'm not quite sure if we've got that information. Um. I I I don't think it's Covid related. So I so I think um the the uh the current performance isn't, I don't believe, is down to Covid. I think it's probably um just a reflection of the previous um performance um before the suspension of CQC uh inspections. I don't know if you've got a view, Becky?
Yeah, ju- just to kind of pick up on that, I I I think it has been um kind of um focused and and maybe got worse because the the fact that CQC are not going out and visiting. So if you were requires improvement and you've done the work, um and actually you are now in a position where you are good, well, you're not going to have anybody coming out to inspect you to say that you're good, because obviously they haven't been happening. So so there is a kind of impact. And and as um Olivia has put in the um commentary, um you know, um we're unlikely to kind of see that trend moving um, you know, this year because of of the nature about what what CQC um are doing um around their inspection activity. Um. There is a focus at the moment around um are are is provision well led? Um. And is it, is it safe? Um. And as Pete has indicated, one of the things that we're doing um is is that kind of targeted and in-depth analysis of of what what are the issues with our um uh providers that are requires improvement, why are they requires improvement, what are the themes? Um. And therefore, how do we target our resource? And and kind of going back to the to point that that Pete has made, that's something that we're doing with our CSU um colleagues who who do have responsibility around um quality and contract management. But absolutely something that we are doing to together. So it is a priority. And I, in fact, just just as as we've been going through this, kind of, um you know, been toing and froing with the the team about um about where that's at.
Thank you for that, Becky. Uh Keith.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm very glad that Pete mentioned extra care housing because that's something that's been on the agenda for many years and is part of the the mix. Has that been delayed more by Covid and things going on? Because we were a long way behind, particularly in Eton and Bedworth. And the second question I had is about um geographical issues. Because obviously, people move between counties or between Coventry and Warwickshire for for care. Um. Is there any geographical issues sort of starting to develop in terms of more people wanting to move out of Coventry into Warwickshire, things like that? Thank you, Chair.
So so in terms of that second point around um people moving counties uh or or um local authorities with with social services responsibility, um I don't, I don't think that's changed during Covid. So I think it, we um, we do have um people who um move out of county. Um. So with our older people's population, we we can often find that people will want to go and live near um their family elsewhere. Um. We retain responsibility so that the responsibility doesn't go to the new authority. Um. And the same for Coventry. They may place within Warwickshire in 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 care homes. Um. But the responsibility stays with that local authority. So I I don't think we're seeing any um any shift in that that pattern. Um. I think it's quite stable. In terms of extra care, um or Becky, do you know what? Have we got any plans around any new facilities on extra care that the count, the county council is putting in? Because the thing with extra care is some of it's done by district, some of it's done by the the county. Um. I know we've done some.
Yeah, the 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 programme hasn't been kind of added to um during Covid. So the the programme, which we can can circulate, I think um colleagues within commissioning do send um briefings. And I know that that Les um has had one recently. Um. But um, yeah, the the programme that we've been working to is still the same one. So I'm happy to um share that with members so you're clear about um what is coming online and and when. Clearly, you you know, we are aware that there has been an impact on planned um buildings in in the pipeline um as a result of Covid across the board, but I will make sure that that is shared.
Thank you very much. Uh Les.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um. We are, we are reviewing our uh our our provision to see that it does meet um the needs of Warwickshire as now is, and that obviously will include Covid changes. We're actually looking at people's mobility and and our population. We haven't had a uh a major review for some time, so that is taking place at the moment. Um. But I can say the new facility at Bishopton uh will be topped out uh next week because I'm going. Um. So yes, we are still um doing some building, but as Becky has said, um it has stalled somewhat, but we are uh doing an overall review of what we're doing that side. And as soon as anything available, I'll share it with committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you. I've got any more, any more questions coming up? So um uh Pete and Becky, thank you once again for your uh presentations. Um. Uh. They have been very much appreciated and uh I'm sure you've made a note of all the comments that um uh members have raised. Thank you very much. All right, we're going on now to um conscious of the time. All right, we're going on now to Conscious of the Time Work Programme. For November, we do have the, a focus on mental health services. And we will be having, I don't know whether Chris Bain is still with us, I think he is. Well, anyway, Chris Bain will be doing a Healthwatch survey on patient experience during the current pandemic. So that is going to be quite a full discussion, I am sure. I do intend, I did receive a email regarding the Coventry and Warwickshire Health and Care Partnership, which had been selected as an early implementer of a new system via which the public will access NHS urgent and emergency care. WCC, you know, we're going to be a key stakeholder. So I'm going to, I don't have a lot of information yet. I'm not sure of the start date of this new system. So I should be raising that with the spokespersons at our meeting and looking at whether there is any relevant information which will be available for our November meeting. Have we, any members got any questions on? You've got the details there of the issues that we've got outstanding and working on. Any questions that need to be raised? Okay, anything on the forward plan of Cabinet, Les?
Not at the moment, Chair. And as you've just said about the early thing with the partnership, as soon as I have further detail, I'll see they are shared as well, Chairman, because I'm waiting for those details as well.
Great. Thank you very much for that, Les. Thank you. You have circulated there for you the forward plan of the district councils. I don't know whether any of the, our council representatives wish to make any comments. Sally.
Yes, good morning. Just to advise you that at full council last week, we agreed to proceed with a single scrutiny committee with the scrutiny work carried out by task groups. Their first meeting will be the 2nd of November this year.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Perhaps you'll keep us updated, of course. Thank you. June.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We had quite a long extended meeting actually at Nitten and Bedworth. It was a special overview and scrutiny committee simply to discuss the Covid 19, the Covid 9 situation, sorry. It was interesting. We had a lot of speakers. Concerns were expressed during that meeting about testing, about specific areas of Nitten that had shown a high level of Covid. And the questions were answered, but I don't think perhaps many people were convinced that enough had been done in those areas. But we did have the meeting. It did take a while to get through the meeting because there were lots of questions, but at least it happened, yeah.
Thank you very much for that, June. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Just, I don't think there's anything else on sections five and six. So unless anybody has got anything else to raise on the work programme, that concludes our meeting for this morning. I think it's been a good meeting. Some very good questions have been raised. And I thank everybody for their input and attendance this morning. Thank you very much indeed, and as they say, keep safe. Thank you.
Well done, Chairman. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye bye, Polly. Thank you.